Reading notice and adopt the agenda.
Okay.
This is always good.
All right, thank you.
I thought that we did.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. This is a committee of the whole meeting, so audience members can participate during the meeting, but if they have anything that they would like to have us look at for future meetings, now would be the time to make those suggestions. See anyone coming up to make any? So, we'll move on. Number four, reports. For A, high school representative report, we have Caitlin Damas.
Yes.
With us tonight.
Yeah.
And she's a junior.
Mm-hmm.
At the high school, so she's representing the student body. So Caitlin, what would you like to tell us about the high school?
Um, well, we just finished, as many of you know, our winter formal, which was very successful, actually. Everything went well, and now we're, Student Senate specifically is planning the next blood drive. Um, also, in other news, we have the Godspell, which is coming out, which is our new drama play, musical. Other than that, I learned recently, a lot of the kids just learned about the new grading system that was going to take place. We read the newspaper today that came out, which was really informative, so I really liked that. Nothing really extremely new, as far as Student Senate goes, we just finished up the big portion of our year, and so now we're focusing on fundraising. I know the juniors specifically have started, we started our prom meetings already, and we began planning what we're gonna, we have our theme down, we began planning our food, we have locations set, things like that, so it's kind of a slow pace by everything.
You disappointed that there wasn't a snow day yet?
Uh, no. It's fine. Why not?
Any questions for Caitlin?
What are the dates of the Godspell?
Oh, I haven't heard anything yet. I believe it is the, um... Is it March? Yeah.
Senior citizen dinner and the...
March 20th. Yeah, they just put up a post, I believe, in the front, yeah.
March 20th is the dress rehearsal, the senior dinner, and then that's on Wednesday, so then usually the performances are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Caitlin.
Thanks.
All right, for B, elementary schools' report on academic achievement.
So we presented this goal at the, I think, previous board meeting in October, and then again, we talked about a lot of those things at the board work session, which I thought we went into a lot more detail, we had more time. Uh, so the purpose of this report is to give you a quick view of our progress so far, and we also want to share some information about the MAP score, now that the state has gone back, and over the last five years, it's kind of converted all of our scores in the WKCE to the new kind of NAPF's version, so those are the first things you're gonna see.
So in the old days, we would be talking at length about the WKCE, which is a one-point measure. Test is taken in November, and then an opportunity to finally hear how our students did in March. And unfortunately, that didn't give us a whole lot of information for instruction, quite honestly, and that's probably why this entire process is sunsetting in another year. So we're not gonna belabor, but as Chris said, this, the data now from the state has taken the measure, which is not based on the WKC, but on a totally different assessment, and just placed it on top of the achievement, so to speak, to try to find some way to look at it on a national measure, on a national level.
Our communication standpoint is gonna be like we've said to the teachers, and we're saying to parents, and we've talked about this at the board level, that what we see happening to our results is the same thing that all districts are gonna see happening to their results, and a case in point for Edgerton is, I had a grade level for the past two years that has scored almost at 100% proficiency, and when you look at Edgerton's results, you're not gonna see 100% proficiency, because everything has changed, the benchmark has changed. It's nothing, has nothing to do with our kids. We reported WKCE results to all of you last year. We haven't received the information for this year's WKCE results yet, so what you're seeing now is just converted data. And what this will be, as you look at Edgerton's or back to Lori's, is third, fourth, and fifth grade combined together. Uh, I guess we can look at this and see some trend information, but like Lori said, I don't think we wanna belabor this, because this test will sunset, but at least it gives us an idea of what's gonna be happening as they apply the NAEP. Mr. Brzezowski's here too as well, and he's gonna share some of those slides from the beginning of the school year, just to remind us about what has happened.
So we talked earlier this year, and these are even the same slides, about how the whole conversion worked, and again, we're not gonna belabor that, but in short, NAEP is the one that we hear over and over and over again. What that means is it's a nationally normed set of standards. So basically, instead of us just looking, measuring kids against kids in Wisconsin, which is what the WKCE was, NAEP says we take the whole nation, that's where they determine their averages and where students perform, and that way we can compare Wisconsin to the rest of the nation, and then the world. The three points that we talked about from the very beginning about the WKC, and this is why the WKCE is, quite frankly, not very meaningful to us, is that we've raised the bar locally to compete globally, so we are looking at, how do we focus instruction to our students? How do we study data and determine how we're going to instruct? And Chris and Lori are gonna talk about that as they go through, and that's why it's really important that, the challenge that you are in as board members and we as educators is that oftentimes the WKCE results are those that are published in the paper and those that tend to grab the most attention. They are truly the least meaningful as far as application in the classroom. So what we're, what we're bringing you tonight is showing you how the goals that we specifically set in, in schools are met through classroom teacher's work. The second one, our students' performance has not changed, measuring has changed. The idea is, if you look back at those slides that we talked about, if you look, and Chris talked about the fact he had nearly 100% proficiency, if you look at this, 2011 and 12, where we had 100% proficiency, we have 29.8 plus 9.4, whatever that mathematical number is, about 40%. We went from 100% proficient in advanced to 40% proficient in advanced, and our kids never took a test. There was no test date yet, they just converted the data, that's why it's meaningless, it doesn't really do us any, any good. The third talking point is that we have higher expectations for our kids, and we have an opportunity to more accurately measure our students, we have a more meaningful way of measuring, knowing that our students who are going out into the world are not just competing against other Wisconsinites, they're just competing against students across the nation. We're happy to see that the state has caught up with us and Whitwell, because we've raised the bar here for quite some time. So the idea that we're gonna talk about, or they're going to talk about, and I'm gonna sit back down in just a second, is previously, this is kind of representative of how we operated. We had the WKC, which was this large span of data, and we had all kinds of issues that popped up and cropped up, and everybody would take their little issue, their pet issue, and they'd do something about it. And what we got was people doing great stuff, but they're doing it in a different direction. Some within an arrow that was moving forward as far as the vision of the district, some maybe not so much, they were independently put forward. The idea is to get everything moving within that same vision, within that same direction. And Chris and Lori are gonna talk about how they focus their vision in each building around reading and mathematics in particular, the measurements, and then most importantly, how it translates into instruction.
So MAP gave us a lot of data last year. It was our first year taking it, it's interesting, so this year we took a new version of MAP, the Common Core State Standards Correlated Version of MAP. So in setting our goal this year, we were looking at last year's data with a different assessment, going, how's this gonna work? Let's just kind of play it by year and take a look at the data as it comes in. So we were shooting for a seven-point increase in the area of mathematics, and that's fall mean RIT to, now their students took it in winter, but we're gonna be comparing the fall to what the spring level is. So what we have available for you tonight is the fall and the winter level MAP assessments.
And it's, as you notice, it's second through fifth grade, because second through fifth grade take the same test. First grade's test is, is different in a number of ways. Still, very important for them to take it, but it's a different measure, so that's why it's stuck to those. So, the interesting thing about, that you need to know that we think is so valuable, why we're taking MAP assessment and what we do with it, is that it isn't, assessment isn't the end of it all, and we close the books on it for another year. An assessment is the beginning of what's the next step now, instructionally. And so, in the fall, and then again in the winter, we, we look at what are, what are the norms supposed to be? Where are, where are children supposed to be at this, at these grade levels? And then we look at our actuals, and I think it's really important to note that, looking at our actuals, we're typically above the bar to start with. So, and you can see that from all of the, the differences being in the plus column. I think it's also important to know, these are all the students. Every single boy or girl that was there during that window, that began with us, we, we took, we took them in and tested them, so we know where they were to begin with, get a baseline on them. And then already in our mid-year, from fall to winter, you can see the norm data and the difference, we're, we're doing great. I mean, kids are, kids are really progressing, the differences are anywhere from, you know, looks small, about plus, um, about 1.1, but we've got other students or other grade levels that are at 3.7. So they're moving along. The important part is, is that we don't just say that, you know, reading isn't just, or math isn't just one component of a test, it breaks into other sub-skills, so we're able to know, maybe perhaps one area, they were very strong in, in an area of math, one of the five strands, but there's an area that they might have been lower in, so then we, we bring attention to that by means of, of some type of instruction.
Also, you know, you can look at the difference, so we're above the national norm with the difference, this is Lori's school, but you also look at the actuals, and our goal was seven points, and in many cases, at mid-year, we're already hitting that goal, so wheels are turning a little bit. The assessment this year is not, the test that they took is not easier, as a matter of fact, it's more rigorous, but this is our second time around, our second year, that the staff and the students have taken this assessment, so I believe, or we hypothesize that one of the bumps that we're getting is the fact that we're not, we've been through this year, and we're also using the data, and we're doing some goal-setting with students, which has been very powerful, where you can run a report, where they see the beginning level, RIT score that they receive, and where they should be projecting at the end, where they struggled and where they can improve, and now not only can the teacher be doing some goal-setting, but the students can be doing some goal-setting as well, so there's more ownership being taken. So moving to Edgerton's, it look, uh, we have this pretty much the same picture here as what you see at HCE, looking at the fall, looking at the difference between the nor, uh, national norm being in the plus column, which is great, same thing with the winter, and then our term growth ranges anywhere from 12 points down to six. And you will notice that too, when you look at your overall growth, you will notice as the students move from grade level to grade level, that the term growth is smaller, because statistically, as the kids get older, the growth, there's not as much room to grow.
Same thing with reading achievement, what we stated that we would do, looking at last year's results, that we would hope that students would make a three-point RIT increase. And so, you might be, you know, wondering why three, why seven? We looked at last year's information, we also looked at consistency in curriculum, we're doing some changes with our, our reading curriculum, really trying to see some of the gains that we're seeing across in, in math, so that's where we came up with the three-point reading achievement. And, similarly, you're gonna see everything in the plus column, except down in fifth grade, I have a little bubble there that is showing a little negative, but as you can look to the winter RIT, it already has surpassed the, the norm, and, and it's already at a, a full three points ahead. So, again, we take those students wherever they are, they might have had a little summer slide, they might have been new to our buildings, and we take them, we figure out where they're at, and we really try to tailor instruction for them. And again, what Chris just described is evident, if you're looking at that term growth in the middle, you can see at first grade, yes, they've made a 12.2 increase, and it goes all the way down as, kind of go through the categories, that fifth grade increase is quite, you know, quite astounding, usually it's not quite that high, so that's awesome, awesome news for our kids. If you look to your, to your, to your, mm-hmm.
I guess I would highlight the second grade here. We have a group of students in our second grade that is academically struggling, or I would say has tended to academically struggle more. We really hit hard with interventions in that grade this year, so whereas they were minus 1.2 behind the national norm to start the year, now at the winter level, they are a plus 2.6. So, and they've made 11 and a half points of actual being as far as term growth. So that, I guess what that is showing me is that with focused effort on the staff's part, along with some intervention, using some of our interventions that we have in place at the elementary level, uh, that can make a very positive impact on students, even in the short period.
What's really powerful with this, and I just wanna take it back to what Chris and Lori had said before, is that this side of the chart, notice that you have clear targets of where students should be. So the idea behind this, unlike the WKC, which is like an autopsy, there's nothing about it, and by the time we get the data back, the student's done three quarters of the year, we actually, this, this, these empty boxes, and this data here informs the instruction that will happen right at this dark line here, before they take the spring test. So they can actually take the idea, they can take the data, teachers, and by they, I mean teachers, students, and, and parents, actually have the idea of where their students are and where they need to be, and they can set goals and intervene in order for students to meet those other marks. So what it does is it provides a real-time adjustment piece, and it's more like a diagnosis rather than that autopsy.
Yeah, we're seeing this by grade level, but imagine that every teacher can do this at their particular, within their particular classroom, and every teacher can do this with every child, so the children see where their fall is, where their term growth should be, the mark that they, they're supposed to be hitting, where they're struggling, what their improvement goal would be, so that's the power. Okay, and this is just a reading composite form, remember, the last time, the last meeting, I brought the books out, and so this is where we sit down next to the students and the teachers read with them. That's these columns right here, this is actual data of the third grade, we blocked out the names, and then the MAP scores that we bring over from the MAP assessment, and then what we've done is we've done some color coding, red being below, yellow being at, green being above, orange also being slightly above. What we're looking for is orange, yellow, or green, and we're doing correlations now between that, sit down next to the child and wa, and listen to them read, and the MAP, and seeing it where there is the correlation, seeing maybe in some areas where students, for instance, did a little bit better with that sit down and read with the teacher versus how they're doing in MAP. Just another good piece of information for us, that when they're going and doing these standardized tests, maybe we're not seeing the level of performance that we are with the, with some of the classroom assessment. So it's just another piece of data, we're looking for multiple pieces of data to get a picture of the whole child. Then what the teachers do is they take this form by classroom, and then we take and put all of the third grade students together, for instance, and then we align where kids are struggling, so, well, you can just dump this into a spreadsheet, and then you can sort in many different ways. And what we're looking for is to make sure that all students, low, higher, middle, are being properly challenged. At the higher end, you know, what extensions can we put in place? At the lower end, what type of interventions can we put in place so that they're experiencing success throughout the year?
We use this also when we put them into the hall during our targeted teach time, when we have opportunities to then, which is when our block's scheduled once a day, an opportunity to cross-grade levels, kind of reconfigure classrooms, so that boys and girls are getting that targeted instruction. Perhaps it's an intervention where they're leaving out, like you can see the LLI on the side, and they're going somewhere for a, a reading specialist or an interventionist to work with them, or they're working within their classroom, or one of the other two or three classrooms at that grade level, and they're reconfiguring students. So, it's not just I am, as my third grade teacher, trying to figure out my students, it's I'm one of a team that's figuring out our, you know, 60, or 70, or 100, or whatever the number is at that particular grade level. And then PALS, we talked about this also during the data meeting. PALS is the phonemic awareness literacy screener. So, wanna make sure that you understand that it's a screening tool, it's, it's not meant to do some of the other achievement pieces that perhaps like MAPS would do. It helps us match the instruction to what boys and girls need. So, it's, it, it is very important that, certainly, it's very important that, he must be wanting me to say something.
You already said it.
The red, the red parts are where the student might have, have, you know, not scored where we wanted them to, and so, because it's that screening tool, we can say, okay, it looks like student number six needs some help in these certain areas. And again, even down to the kindergarten level, boys and girls are moving around, they're going to one of the other kindergarten classroom teachers, or they're going to our reading specialist, or an interventionist that's during that time, and we can have groupings, you know, that might be only, that might be only six students in that one particular group, because they need very targeted instruction because of the screening tool. And, and really why we're using it, again, well, certainly because the governor put it in, into law, but very importantly, it is identifying these, these gaps in our, where our boys and girls are, so that they can be ready for that MAP assessment the following year. And we, and I will say, while we didn't use PALS as the particular phonemic awareness tool, we've been using a phonemic awareness tool for six years, and really have found that this particular tool is, is just, works just great for us as well, so. And again, Tony has mentioned, Chris mentioned, you know, the bottom line is, we are, we've got teachers using data in real time, not waiting until March and the, you know, the test comes back to us. They're using it in real time, making instructional decisions on a, on a daily, or in, in some cases, weekly, couple of week basis. Chris talked about the goal-setting. We have boys and girls who, they know now what they're supposed to hit, and they will come up to me and say, Mrs. Comas, high five, I got 202, I'm past the number, or whatever that the case may be. Back to the parents being aware, I mean, the bottom line is, as a parent, I know myself, I, I kinda dreaded those type of standardized tests when the results would come home, and I know that our parents sit down and they, they can see through the charting where boys and girls have been, how they're doing through the year, they can, they can ask those kind of, those questions, saying, okay, I see this map, math score is kind of high, or kind of low, what does it, what are the components that went into that? They're really getting informed as well. And the bottom line is, you know, everyone's got this motivation to be successful, and we're able to do that because we're collaborating, and there is this accountability that's really built in, based on just the fact that they wanna see kids be successful and, and help them reach goals to obviously be prepared for the next grade levels. Okay. Any questions for us?
How, how have the parents reacted? Has there been any feedback, and how has it changed conferences? Because that's that, that time that you really get to sit and talk to the parent about their child's progress, and those math numbers are grading, and they get sent home with a letter, but how, how has that informed your conferences and any feedback from the parents?
Well, I know we send them ahead of time, because again, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you need to kind of look through as a parent and, and have that advance notice of. So we've been trying to get them home into their hands a day or two ahead of time, just to at least be able to kind of look through what are we gonna see? And, and remember again, it's one measure. So we want to see how they're doing on MAP, how they're doing on, on the classroom-based assessments. You know, it, it's, it isn't the only measure that we're taking, but it certainly is, has been proven to be a good one for us to help build instruction.
I have actually some staff members that run student-led conferences, and so one way that some staff members are using this information is that, is with the goal-setting, and the student gets to describe to the parent how they are doing in MAP, and what, what areas they're doing well, area where they need to improve, and what their plan is now for the second half of the year. So that is one really neat way that I've seen this, this has been helped.
I think parents also have said that they're glad that there's opportunities for, you know, other types of tests, because, you know, as we move into, you know, in this 21st century, taking it in front of a computer, taking an assessment from the computer is probably a pretty typical experience that our kids will be having, it's not as much paper and pencil. So we're offering a variety of ways to take assessments for kids, and giving them those experiences from early on. So I've heard that is a positive as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, has the collaborative time, the PLCs, helped?
I think so.
Wow, I think so greatly.
Because you have all this data, and you, and that's where you confer about it?
Yeah, well, actually, we have collaboration time built into the school day, and then the collaborative time that the district has put in place allows us to collaborate across buildings. So we've been doing a number of cross-building initiatives, and it is really powerful and valuable when something's going on great in a classroom, and you're not even in that building, and now you get to work with a, like, work with a team, and learn a completely different way to do something that will impact the achievement of all of our, all of our students. And I think our focus now is, we're one big elementary school across the board, we want all of our students to be successful, because they're all filtering into the middle school, and so, so that's how we see ourselves. And I think that collaborative time allows that.
Definitely.
And I, Eileen and I, I believe Eileen went also to the knowledge of town, is that what it was called?
Mm-hmm.
And I was, I, I did mostly the younger kids in the morning, and, um, of those 50 questions, we asked them, I was, I was glad I was asking them. Because I don't know if I could get them all right. Now, I know that they were, they had studied them correctly, correct?
Um, the teachers collaborated, again, kind of on the questions that are a part of a grade-level curriculum. So, they might have had them already, they might not have, you know, depended on where the curriculum was, but most of them, yeah.
And I also say that, pretty much to every one of them, those children, they're all excited to do this, to learn, to know, to, to answer those questions, and, you know, they had, they had their leader, and they were, it was, it was pretty impressive, that they're, that they're interested and having fun learning, and I think that makes it a really good environment.
Even kids who go to interventions, they don't see them as this is like something bad. They, they know that what they need to work on, it's not, it, it isn't seen as a negative at all, because everyone's working on something. So, you know, what that something is might be a little different of where you are, but during the course of that targeted time, but we've all got something to learn.
And I know in the data session, Tony emphasized third grade math, third grade reading and eighth grade math, so how are we doing with third grade reading? Good, right? From what I saw?
Is that, third grade is, that's not third grade, because you said, you're gonna test second, third?
No, it's second, third, fourth, and fifth, we test all of them. That's our current third grade.
Does that make sense, is what I'm saying? Because one would be second grade, right?
No, those numbers are grade levels.
No, those are the grade levels. So that's first grade?
These are actuals for this year.
This year.
Unlike the WKCE.
So the third grade is listed, going across...
That column, that one.
Did, did I understand your question?
Yeah, I think, I think what the confusion was is, was, were you, we, I thought at some point you said you weren't testing first, first graders, so we are testing.
No, no, they're not a part of the goal, that's, as it's written, it says second through fifth grade, because they're taking MAP, and the first graders are taking MAP for primary grades. Slight, it's still all in the same company, slight difference, first grade assessment is auditorially, auditorially supported, so that boys and girls aren't reading off of the screen, it's being read to them, it's telling them what to do.
Sometimes we see a dip in results when they're done taking the first grade to the second grade, when the audio is... second grade, when the audio support comes away from, away from them. So we wanted to focus second through third.
But you are testing first grade.
We are. Yes, we are.
That's the confusion.
It's a different format.
Understanding.
Yep. Sorry for the confusion.
Anything else? Anybody from the audience? Okay, thank you, Chris and Lori. All right, let's move on to four C, Board Goal Review, goal number two, communication.
This will be really brief.
Chris and I continue to work with School Perceptions on developing our survey. As you remember, one of the tactics from our last strategic plan was to resurvey the community about our communication. So it's just about finished. We've had a number of teleconferences with Bill Foster, so we're just tweaking a few things, waiting for a little bit of information from some of the principals. And then I would suspect we probably will be, have the survey out in the next two to three weeks.
And that's the customer service questionnaire? Is that it?
It's a, a community communication survey. It's similar to what we did four years ago. So it's about our communication, but there are some things in there about new initiatives and...
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, there's two different surveys we talked about, and I'll be talking about the customer service survey when they're finished.
Okay.
But this one's the district-wide survey of all the community members, and you guys did a big survey like...
Four years ago.
About four years ago. And this will give you some really good data to compare over that four-year period, what's changed, have any priorities changed, what kind of direction is the community most interested in, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the purpose was to correlate the, many of the questions from four years ago till now, adding in some questions where Bill Foster believes he gets better data or information than what he's received in the past after doing, what, hundreds of more surveys? And, and plus, we want to, once we get that information, we're going to set and, put a new set of communication goals in place. So there's a lot of things we've done, knowing that there's a lot of things we still need to do, and this survey will give us good information from the community, from the staff, all stakeholders.
So we didn't have copy of what was sent out previous in our board packet to refer to?
A previous survey?
We just had this...
From the four years ago.
From the four years ago.
No.
Okay.
That's data that we could share.
Well, yeah, when we, it'll be more valuable to you when we get it again, but we did share it with the board during, but that was prior to, I think it was prior to you, Eileen, when we started the strategic planning process in the library, we shared it all.
It's like a 50-page document.
All right, thank you. Are you going to talk a little about...
Yep.
Customer service questionnaire under this goal, under the communication?
Yep. Yes, I am. And Eric, oh, from way back there, this guy's a magic person. You, I gave you a paper copy in the board packet, but I wanted you to see what it would look like on the website, and Eric did a good job of taking that paper copy and translating it into this. So going back up to the top, some, they'd click on the first one, picking, you know, as they were at Edgerton Elementary, they'd pick Edgerton Elementary, and then...
Who is "they"?
Anybody, anybody that has contact with the district. So if you're a delivery, if you're the UPS guy and you want to fill this out, you can. If you're a parent that stopped in today and you want to fill out the customer service thing, you can. We stopped short of circling, do the survey, and entered yourself for a drawing kind of thing, but this is a start. I mean, because we really want to, just like businesses, we want to see what kind of face are we putting out to our public. So, okay, take it off of that one, Eric. And then the first one is, share your experiences with the following individuals. If they saw the principal, they'd, they'd grade him or her. If they haven't, they won't. If they had met teachers, if they had a great experience with LunchAids, they'd put that down as well. Then the next one down, we talked, this is, I think, a 10-question, seven-question. You know, we want it short enough that it takes you about 30 to 60 seconds to fill out so people are comfortable doing it. If it's a five-minute survey, most people won't do that kind of thing. If you had experience with any of our programs, before-school care, after-school care, youth sports, and names them all the way down, curricular areas we talk about, school cleanliness, safety, you know, things like when you walk into school, you know, the office support staff, are they friendly, you know, that type of thing. So this is just a quick survey for people to share their opinions. The last thing on there is, we want information about them so that if we do make any changes or we want some clarification or something, we can always give it to them. But this is also, kind of ties in with the board policies that give a little bit more credibility. If you're going to say who you are, you know, your comments have a little more value. So, and the reason I wanted to share it with the board is, you're all community members. And if you had any suggestions, give them to me over the next two weeks because before the end of the month, we want to put this online. So if you have any suggestions for changes or improvements, we'd be happy to add them or delete them, what's on here now, if you have anything that would be helpful. We'll run it past you again in two weeks and come to a consensus and post it online probably the next day.
So that was my question, how would this be distributed? So you're going to put it on the website, and then how will you communicate that it's on the website?
Then we'll do our, our typical thing when there's something new. We'll send out an email blast to parents saying, this is on the website. Then it's up to people like Kathy, you know, Lisa, you know, saying, hey, you know, we have this on our website, so if you want, want to visit it, share your comments, thoughts, you know, hopefully they're all outstanding. But it's also, if perceptions are not outstanding, it's good to know because then you can work on it.
Would it be helpful to know who's filling out the survey? Not the particular name, but whether it's a student or a teacher, or a delivery person, or a...
Well, we could certainly add it to that.
Kind of a person is filling out?
Go back to your question.
I was thinking of a good way of saying it.
It is optional information. I mean, you could have a vendor who didn't get awarded a contract, who decides that he wants, he or she wants to give a negative feedback. What value is that to the district? That's my concern with these kind of general surveys is, how do we make sure we hit the target audience that we're aiming for? And I'm not sure we do that here. If anybody can go on our website and complete this, and we get data that's really kind of distorted, I want to make sure we hit our stakeholders. And our stakeholders are our parents, our teachers, students, our taxpayers, et cetera. So I, you know, that's my concern, is that we get all this data, and then it's really, when you try to fit it into a bell curve, it doesn't fit into a bell curve at all.
So you'd want to target the, most people don't randomly stop on the website through them. So if we send out an email, it's going to be mostly the people that were going to be interested in their opinion. And it's just a general invitation, those who wish, who can, those who don't, that's okay as well. Because it's basically a report on, it's a real-time, meant to be a real-time survey. And it's a first shot at it, so it can be modified as we go along.
I agree that, that brevity is important because if people let say, it'll only take you 20 minutes, you're going to lose them. You know, you need something that's done in five minutes or less, so I would agree with that. But you also want to make sure that that, then, that responsive audience is who we're looking to try to serve. And those people are our stakeholders. I'm not sure how you do that, and then...
I think we can figure that out. A parent, teacher, we just do, I mean, parent, community member, just do a, that also keeps it streamlined and brief.
Are you contacting the tax card, the community members?
When we do our, when we do our next community, the newsletter, the...
The viewpoint?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The viewpoint. We can make sure that we highlight it there.
It could also be in the N竜 or on the patch. You can put it there, right?
Or the, yeah, yep.
I have two questions, two questions here. Okay. So with this survey, monkey, does it limit to one response or an email address or something? So say you have somebody that was very happy or unhappy with something, what's to stop them from submitting something multiple times? Is there any kind of...
With the settings the way they are, general settings, it limits it to an IP address by computer location. It's not an email address, it's actually a device. Now, if they happen to have 15 computers in their house, they could hear your 15 responses. So it's by address, not email address.
Well, I'm just thinking, I get it at home, and I'm on my computer, and my wife has different thoughts than I do, but whoever gets there first, help. I'm being serious.
But these are all options we can change.
Because we, we, we almost, I think we ran into it once before. I don't remember what survey it was, but one of us couldn't answer.
And those are things we can change. You know, that's, we can determine how we want this to go on.
And then my second question is, do we have a defined timeframe that the survey is available?
This is a, the thought on this is it's always on the website.
Always on the website.
So if two weeks from now you come in and you have a great experience, I, sometimes I forward them to you, sometimes I don't, but I, there's a number of parents that are const, not constantly, but they'll identify a teacher, say, this teacher did a great job, so they'll send that to me, I'll respond back, I'll forward it to the teacher and the building principal, and congratulate them. This is also another way of doing that kind of thing. And it's, like, like Bernie said, it's a, it is a generality. It's a, and can someone vomit with a bunch of, if they wanted to, probably, but you've got to take that with a grain of salt, too. We're all, we all understand what it is, and basically, it's, it's just a piece of the community engagement puzzle. It's just one tiny piece, and you just take it in context.
What about communications? Is that going to be addressed in how we communicate in the one that Chris and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Plus, we do have that, it's a, that community engagement presentation which will be coming up next month, which shows specifically what our goals are through that, the community engagement process itself, which is a whole nother committee that's very targeted just on community engagement. And I've sent some emails to you guys about that in the past.
So Caitlin, would you fill out the survey?
My mom probably would.
We want to hear from you. So that, and that completes my presentation on this, but if, again, if you're sitting at home and go, you know, this would be a great question to have in there, please send it off and, you know, if, any suggestions whatsoever are very welcome.
Okay.
Even from you guys.
Thank you.
And all the questions are kind of that one to five, outstanding to poor, whether five be outstanding and one be poor, or...
Yeah, it's just, it's just a typical...
And then there's some narrative, right? So, okay.
And we, I know a lot of parents always ask for a comment section, so we try to give them a little comment box.
Okay. All right, so moving on to four D, another board goal review, the goal number four, mobile tablet technology.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Here to present to you a little update. Are you awake?
Yeah.
All right, good, good, good.
The carny.
Here to present to you on goal number four, a quick update. These were presented in the fall. Just want to make sure everyone's awake there. You know, we're getting a little sleepy, it's nice and warm and cozy in here. These were, or this was the goal set forth for this year, and then all of the sub-goals that go along with it. So goal number four is provide mobile tablet technology in classrooms to support academic achievement. And we've been rolling on this project since July 1st. And then the sub-goals have to do with everything it takes to make this program happen. So the first one up there is, obviously, we have to train our teachers and our staff, lots of professional development, and we certainly provide a lot. We started out with a survey in August of the staff, asking them to self-assess, what are your weaknesses? Where do you not have knowledge when it comes to educational technology? And from there, and then use that to set up trainings, professional development opportunities throughout the year, based on their survey needs plus some other goals that we have within our technology plan. So that was completed in September, and then we rolled right into the actual training. So that's this part. Thank you, Mr. Laser Pointer, I do appreciate that. Complete a scheduled training and then actually execute those trainings. Semester one is complete, semester two is ongoing. Looks a little like this. There we go. And I'm not going to go through this entire thing, this is a multi-page document of all the trainings we've offered. We kicked it off with our staff August Institute. All of these sessions you see listed here with descriptions were all breakout sessions. It takes up the majority of the day, staff were all required to attend three different sessions quite a bit in a single day. This is the matrix schedule of what we actually offered and provided to our staff members for training. We then roll into after-school in-service. These are on a voluntary basis. Staff stay for a short time after their regular workday. Sessions typically are 45 minutes to an hour, very focused on a very specific topic. And so these are all of the ones that went on throughout first semester, listed here. Couple of them are actually rolling into second semester, too. There we go, and a second. Again, a variety of different topics. These are based off of, again, the technology plan goals and also the survey of staff of their weaknesses that we needed to work on. And then we've also offered four Apple professional development dates. These are all-day-long sessions, groups of 20 staff members, teachers, and we bring in Apple contracted instructors who are educators and leaders in their field. And we did two of those in December, those are complete, and we have two more coming up next week. We're in the process right now of scheduling all the semester two after-school trainings, and then just in the works, and literally this is going to look rough because it's incomplete. Next week, we have an in-service day, and we will do, again, a kind of mini-institute, just like we did in August, with breakout sessions, and staff will have to send, attend two separate one-hour trainings. These are the sessions that we are going to offer for that, and just now getting the schedule and trainers put together for that. That's a work in progress. So that's all the training that we have going on this year here at Whitnall to accomplish So the second sub-goal was to create a teacher-developed lesson plan and mobile app database. Why are we doing this? Well, we saw a good graphic earlier that Tony put up about people working in different directions, and working hard, but oftentimes not in the same direction for improvement. And that's what we're trying to do, is pull this together. So I'm working with Tony on this with a group of teachers that we have that is our pilot group, the 20 staff members that are doing this with us. And we are assembling our own database of curriculum, lesson plans, apps for the iPads for the one-to-one program, and lesson plans, all coming together, and it's all going to be tied to the common core. And this will be searchable, teachers will be able to go on this and look at this. So we started this back in November, that's the first part there. We got the, kind of the back-room dusty stuff, the server setup, the infrastructure setup on the network, that kind of thing. Started programming and customizing these databases. That has turned out to be a major, major project. That's taken longer than originally planned. I had hoped to have that done right about now. It's going to roll into March before that's finished. It's a long plan. Our other option, we could go and buy a pre-CAM system, and that would cost us about $10,000 to $12,000 a year, every year. Instead, we bought a system for 1,500 bucks, we're designing it ourselves from the ground up, and we get exactly what we want out of it. We're beta-testing the system, part of it is up and running. And so we have this staff iPad pilot group that's working with us, and it looks a little something like this. You get just a preview, it's rough, can be accessed anywhere, that was the other goal of this, they can get to it from anywhere they want. So it's on the web, they can get to it from the web, they can be on an iPad and get to it, they could be on an Android smartphone, sit in their pocket, in Honolulu, it doesn't matter, if they have network access, they can get to it. You're with me for one second here. This is where you get nervous and technology will fail you. So this is our app database, and teachers can come in here, and if they've found an app that works well in their classroom... and if they've found an app that works well in their classroom with their lessons, they come in here, they give it a little description and very quickly, dropdown boxes, kind of like the survey we saw before, they can pop in grade levels that applies to, what curricular area or subject, the different categories that it would help out with in the classroom. They rate it on a scale of one to five. If there's a cost associated, they can put that here. And then the missing parts, the big blank area sitting all in here, where there's nothing here is what has to be developed yet. Thank you, sir. And that's going to be, how does this tie into the common core? And there's going to be dropdown menus whereby grade level, subject area, they can actually put the core standards that this app helps with. How does the instructional technology tie into these common core, you know, pieces that we're looking for? And they can put that right here and match those up. And then any of our other staff members will be able to see this. And as Tony aptly has put, we're going to get this perfected, it's going to be all the way into next year before this thing is completely done and up and running. And we're going to sell it for millions of dollars and as a school district, we'll never have to worry about our budget again.
That'd be good.
All right, back to how we're doing here on the main goals. Um, we also need to, well, then you see there's some parts that are coming yet later in the year. We've initiated a review of digital textbook and virtual library systems. I'm working on that with Jody Sabar. Um, we went to the SLATE conference, we sat down there, talked to some vendors and everything. It's ongoing, I'll be very candid and tell you yet, we have yet to find a piece that we believe fits well here at Whitnall. We had three presenters last year come in, we've had two other vendors come in this year, plus the SLATE conference, we continue to look. I'm not sold yet on any of these services, we'll keep you updated. The board also asked for a report and I thought it tied in well with the mobile piece here on our visit to Milton School District a couple of weeks ago. A number of us went down, so we're going to kind of roll that right in with updating you on the board goal here. So, we went down a few weeks ago myself, Dr. Holtz went along, uh, the middle school administration went along, senior teachers went along, and we went to Milton Middle School. Why did we go there? Well, last year, when we started looking at a one-to-one tablet program or a mobile computing system. And what I had heard from the state email list, oh, you got to go check out Milton, check out their high school. Well, that was the wrong one. I went down to visit the high school and they do have an excellent program, but it's hit and miss. It's a classroom here and a classroom there, true one-to-one. Kids take the technology home at night and everything, but it does not encompass their entire building. And so, at the SLATE conference in December, I saw Milton Middle School presented. And it is pervasive, the technology has basically vanished into the background because it's ingrained in what they do there every day. Doesn't matter if you're an aide, a teacher, an administrator, a student, a sixth grader and eighth grader, a special ed student, it doesn't matter. Every person in that building uses the mobile technology. And because everybody uses it, it's not about the technology anymore. It's about what they're doing with it and what they're learning with it. And so, I saw this presentation, I got really excited and I said, we got to go visit these guys and we, I want to see what they're doing in the classroom. And I want you guys to see what they're doing in the classroom. So, we went down and visited Milton Middle School. Five hundred and seventy-five students, makes them just a little bit larger than our middle school. They have this multi-year program in place. It's not just their first year, they're a couple of years in. And I do have to give a thank you and a public acknowledgement to Tim Shigur, their principal, and his staff. Um, Dr. Holtz, they were simply awesome, weren't they?
Yeah, very much so.
They welcomed us into their building, any classroom we wanted to walk into. We got to see this over multiple hours of the day firsthand what they're doing, real-world situation. This is a very rough thirty seconds.
All right, let's try this next one, Tim. What do we have to look at to determine how far we move?
It's math class?
The exponent.
Can't tell who's special ed, can't tell who's regular ed?
So, what correction and how far are we going to move?
No textbooks?
Both left ones.
Kids are engaged in the lesson on exponents?
Over one, space, so our final answer is going to be our decimal point.
Taking their notes and exercises directly onto the mobile device that follows them home. I know it's not much, but it gives you just a little idea of what one of their classrooms looks like. Now, I could sit up here and tell you all about this and my impressions and what I thought, but I don't have to use this technology every day. Our staff members do, our teachers do. So, I invited Katherine Kaiser to come up and share with you her perspective on what she saw when she was at Milton Middle School.
And I have my notes here, sorry, I didn't want it all up there, so I had to kind of organize my thoughts. So, forgive me for holding this and looking at it. Um, so, I was really, really excited to get to hang out for the day at Milton and just talk to the teachers. I'm really engaging technology, I love trying new things, but it's all great until you try it and then work out, okay? So, I wanted to go, I wanted to see it in action, and then I wanted to talk to the teachers. So, when I left, Eric contacted me and said, well, kind of summed it up into three different areas. And so, the areas I summed it up to, was just the first thing that we talked about when we left was the student engagement. Um, whether it was a kid sitting in the hallway, there was a couple of times we've seen there was like kids sitting, um, just against, in the hallway, they had their iPads up, they were, you know, writing the paper. I think one group was using Google Docs, they were sharing their Google Doc. To just in the classroom, the video that you saw, all of the students really seemed like they wanted to be there. There wasn't anybody sleeping on the desk, um, you know. Middle school students, some of them are sprawled out, some of them look like they're relaxing or whatnot. These kids really, they all had their notes in front of them, they were all engaged in the lesson. I think from a teacher's point of view, the engagement is huge. We want to make this switch from the students being passive learners and just kind of sitting there soaking in all of that wonderful management and giving them, writing it down. And we want them to be active, so we want them to have it and engage and use, use it to find their own resources. So, that was the first thing that I found, was just the engagement was a huge piece. The next one is, uh, organization. And I know some of you have middle school students or have had. Um, the organization piece is so huge for middle school students. Middle school, well, it's just a weird time in their life and trying to get them organized is really difficult. There's nothing really motivating students in middle school. You know, they know technically it's not going to be on their records. So, they don't really care if they have these at home with them. They don't really ca, you know, some, some kids, I just can't, I can't get anything to matter. Some kids will come with everything they need for the whole year, they'll come with everything. They don't want to lose anything, but some kids will come with nothing. So, just the thought of this little device organizing them in their lives is just huge to me and all of the rest of the teachers. Um, and Milton, I know Eric, I don't know if you want to address the calendar issue, but they have, um, Google Calendar that the teachers share with all of the students. So, if your child is in my class and Paul's class, they could get both of our calendars. And then all of our homework assignments would be on there. All of the other teachers' homework assignments on there. They're, they're really, I don't want to say we're taking the responsibility away from them for using their assignment notebook, we're just syncing calendars with them. Much like my husband and I have to sync a calendar because otherwise people forget to write down something and all these stuff gets hit. So, it's us starting to sync our calendars together to kind of function in today's real world, which was amazing that a student could just, and when Eric went into a classroom and says, let me see your calendar.
And yeah, I can show that for us, I can real quick play your, play yours in there. So, my, my takeaway from this, exactly what she was talking about. I went up with the principal for a little while, I was asking questions away from the rest of our group. And I've been there before, I used to work in a one-to-one. I know how to set up a dog and pony show and make it look really good. Oh, school board member's coming down, we got to make it look good. So, I was kind of wondering, who's keeping this in another quarter of the building? And, and I was wondering, you know, did he set up these model classes for us? So, I said, how are the students getting all their information? You know, one of their goals for their program was this school-to-home communication that was really seamless and quick. And I said, do the kids know what their homework is any time of the day, anywhere? And he said, all right, I'll take your challenge. You pick a classroom, any classroom in this building, you walk me anywhere you want, it's a big deal. And you pick a class, we're going to walk in. And he said, I'm going to bet you within thirty seconds, every kid in that room is going to be able to tell you exactly every assignment for every class they have today, yesterday, the day before. Okay, so I walked and cleared the other end of the building, walked into a room, a language arts room, and everyone didn't know we were coming. We just walked in and all of a sudden the kids, whoa! Turned around, the principal's sitting there. And he said, uh, can any of you show me what your assignments are for this class that are going to be due tomorrow? And the kids did not have their iPads out. Understand, it's a time and a place, it's a problem to look at the right time. They did not have them out, but they were all sitting on standby. Those things got whipped out so fast and within five seconds. They clicked, they hit calendar, there's a little icon right there, and they popped it up. Sir, this is what we're doing today, boom, boom, boom. And they do it, and it was right there, and there was no question. And those are the kids, quick enough to draw the other kid's head in ten seconds. I was impressed, I walked, I said, okay, I'm sold.
Um, and the other thing one of the teachers told me was that, um, some of, sometimes the Google calendars are also shared with parents. So, for those students that are, you know, always still on top of their homework, the parents also have the calendar so that they were able to kind of stay in that piece of communication. So, I was able to see really firsthand, um, and I knew right away that this was going to be great for a patron and organization, but my concerns came in from like the teacher part and the management part, which is my third point. Um, so, when I got to sit down and talk to Shelley, the teacher, I was like, hey, but really, come on, I mean, iPads are going to be playing games all day. You know, what, what are some troubles that we've seen? And she's like, well, you know, it's just a different kind of management. She's like, if you're sitting in your lecture room, you know, and the kids going like this, obviously they're probably running cars, you know? It's just a different kind of management. It's no different than the kid tapping his pencil and, you know, trying to make a little beat out of it or, you know, getting up to close notes and really not blowing yourselves. You know, it's just those different kinds of things. And you have to change your thoughts on management. You just, you know, put the butter on the iPad a little bit away. Um, but what she did say is, you know, your teachers might get a little concerned, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of new changes, but in the end, you have to think of how much time you're saving. Um, the first part being like the downtime in the classroom, when you're not actually doing anything, when I'm walking around and checking to see if I run into their homework. I don't want to do that anymore because if we're going paperless, they're going to turn their homework and not give back that. And I'm already going to have that information because they turned it in. And a click of a button, I can see, oh, so-and-so, Austin did turn his homework today. You know, I can have that conversation on the different side of that tip. Um, so that downtime's not there. The turning in the papers and the promising me that you turned it in and it's my fault and I lost it, you know, that's, that's not there. The organization of taking the papers home, um, the photocopying, the sitting at the copier, counting the copies come up. All that time, that is downtime that is necessary, but what kind of wasting? We don't really have to do that anymore. We have to focus our time to create an engaging lessons where the students are actually using this to learn and less teacher-centered activities and more learning-centered activities. And so, I guess that huge switch, that, um, management piece was really concerning for me at first, but then after I talked to her, she's like, you know, after teachers play around with it, it's really, it's really going to be a lifesaver. It's going to be a time saver. The way that, the way that this is changing education is just amazing and teachers are going to take it and run with it. So, from my perspective, I was amazed, I was, it was really, really awesome. Um, I wish all of our middle school teachers could go and hang out there for the day. But it was fun.
Thank you. I'd like to use a little perspective from middle school teachers' point of view of our visit, that we went down there. I thought it was an excellent day. Milton has gone so far to take their lead teacher, who is a technophobic, by her own admission, technophobic teacher, um, did not want to do such an initiative down there and she is now completely sold and their teacher leader. And their principal's been so kind and he has offered to myself and Dr. Holtz and said, if you have teachers that are questioning whether you should have this or not, I will get her a sub and I will send her to your district for the day and she can talk to everyone one-on-one. So, again, Milton has been great with us and, and was well worth the trip. We've also been to, um, Iwaki recently and looked at their mobile initiative and also through their mobile initiative. So, thank you to all those districts for letting us come in. Questions on our Milton visit, um, goal number four, any of the above?
Um, the app piece. I know that you have a rating, a number, a numerical rating system, but knowing, knowing some of our teachers, I do, they're going to be frustrated, I think, of bringing it to a number. Is there going to be room for any refined narrative? That this app was fabulous, but this particular little component, you might want to think about doing something else with it?
That's what the section is on the left-hand side there. And that actually self-expands. So, if they decide they need to write a small novel about this app, they can do that. What? Yes, there's a few that are in there already, they've, they have written small books. This is the prettiest thing, that's a sliced pie.
Eric?
I don't profess to be a technology whiz. I want to know from your perspective, what's the advantages of using a tablet versus going right to a smartphone? Are tablets an unnecessary bust up? And if you have both, how do you use, what are the applications you use a tablet phone versus a smartphone?
I have both. And it depends on what I need to do with it. This is my communications device primarily.
But it's rapidly becoming everything.
It's rapidly becoming everything. My problem is, is that if I need to actually go, let's say, I need to shoot some video with this. I can, but now what happens if I need to make changes to that video? And you can actually do that on tablet now, extremely difficult to do on here. And actually, just the physical size is the problem. And the big argument right now is what is the proper size? Um, and so now, where we might get to with what you're talking about is they're called tablets? You haven't heard the term? You're going to hear it in the next three months. And it's being coined as we speak. Um, because now that we see they're halfway between a tablet and halfway between a phone, I can't honestly tell you what to make of them because they start crossing that bridge. Um, they're also too big to put in your pocket too, you know? Um, you know, if I need to go and I need to type someone more than a two- or three-line email, I'm going to pop out my tablet. It's much easier to do on there than it is on here. Again, it's the size and ability to type and see the words on the screen kind of thing. Um, if I need to do some short word processing, I'm going to jump on, not on this, but on the tablet kind of thing. Uh, now, if I need to go and send a text message very quickly, that's not good. You know, so it depends on what you're doing with it. We may see the technology crossover. Um, the head of the Portage School District, when I was meeting with him, made a really good comment, and I think Tony has said something like this in a completely different conversation, is that we need to stop thinking about the device. The device does not matter. We will put a device in place now for its life expectancy, roughly three years. In year number four, is the device going to be the same? I don't know, we'll see. Um, the devices will change and that's one thing we got to get out of this mentality just because we're doing something now means we're going to do it the same five years from now. Um, obviously, there's a cost perspective there and we want people to invest in the technology and everything. But mobile technology right now, three years is really doable. And at that point, we reevaluate as we run. So, it's about the content, what we're doing with the device. Certain things will not change, the going to the cloud computing and for our students, we talk about 21st century skills and being able to work in that environment. They will have to know that in the workplace absolutely. It doesn't matter if it's this, or that, or that.
Do you envision next year having a textbook in the social, in Mrs. Kaiser's class along with the iPad at this point?
For next year, yes. Yep, and that comes down to the last part of that goal at the bottom where I said, we have not found a solution that I think works well here at Whitnall. Some districts have made that jump. The entire state of Arizona has made that jump. I don't know that we're there yet because part of it is we're asking our students and our staff to make a major shift in how they're going to do things on a day-to-day basis, but they can still use traditional pre-CAMs they want in a digital form. And there are ways to do that, we showed the middle school how to do that, the staff, we can do it. Um, and I think some of them were really shocked at how quick and easy it is to take what they're traditionally doing and move it into the digital realm. But if we have to ask them to completely drop their existing curriculum, and that's what Arizona had to do. You're done with any textbooks you've been using across the board and you're going to use this textbook for mandating you're done with any textbooks you've been using across the board, and you're gonna use this textbook for vanity because it's the only one available in a digital form right now. And that's why we're not real happy with what we've seen right now. Not all the material has been converted yet. Some of the subscription and fee-based systems that are out there are not real, you know, for use yet. I think what we're gonna see is a multi-year phase in. Especially if we start looking at, when we say, "Hey, this textbook is up for adoption, we've had it too many years," that's when we really start looking at, you know, at the departmental or curricular level and go with the teachers and say, "Okay, here's some options that are available right now in the virtual world, the ebook system, do any of these work for you?" A lot of them, but they're professionals, so.
Well, I know even at the college level, there were only certain textbooks that were even available for my son to purchase in an ebook format.
And you see that right now and you look at that, and the colleges are really leading the way with that right now. I mean, every year in the fall, it's growing exponentially, and it's really been out for three years now. And each year, those offerings keep going like this, as more and more publishers come on board and get their material converted.
I'm a little confused. In the survey that you sent out to the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade parents.
Yes.
The wording pretty much says that this means that all students and all teachers will have an iPad that will become a central, central learning tool. Homework will be completed, submitted, graded, and returned electronically. The iPad will also serve as the primary means of organization, replacing the paper assignment notebooks distributed previously. But then you go to the, "We're supporting academic achievement with this technology." And then I heard we're going paperless, so I don't get it.
With the homework, when you and I were in middle school, typically, go each class, have a worksheet a lot, right?
Yep.
Man, have ten or fifteen questions on it, we take that home at night, we have to do that worksheet, turn it in to the teacher the next day. We won't do stuff like that anymore. We may still get that same actual worksheet, but it'll be in digital form. We'll complete on the device that you have sitting right in front of you. And through a connection with a backpack or a very service like this, it allows a teacher-to-student connection, we'll get that. Teacher will send it to me, I'll have it, I'll complete that homework. I will send it back to the teacher and as Katherine mentioned, I will then see exactly what's been completed by each student, what hasn't. Then they'll organize that way, it'll be graded, right digitally, right there. It can actually then be transmitted back to the student with the graded comments right on it, kind of. Those are our first steps to doing that. Now, as we see this phase in over time, we will see the paper textbook begin to disappear. And so, you would have, you would go into your e-reader, another device you're on, and you would have access to that textbook, and you would just, you know, do your reading there.
Okay, and that's what I, it seemed, quite a few parents asked me, Quinn, are the textbooks gone then with this? And then when you said there's a place for the iPad and we put that aside, now we're not learning off that, but we're going back, we're gonna actually take out textbooks also?
Well, there you go.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just would say, like, in my math classroom, one of the things that I would say is, you know, for homework and stuff, we're gonna use this, but sometimes if I'm doing a multi-step equation and it's got fifteen steps to it, I might get, you know, they're gonna put the iPad away, let's actually work this out, you know, we wanna see the linear sequential format and we want it to be very organized, so we're gonna stick with pencil and paper on this, much of which I would still keep in my classroom for them, and I'm giving them to them anyways now. Even, I know this year, I did not hand out math textbooks to my students. I have online quotes, you know, we don't have the one-to-one. If they asked for it, I said, you know, "Textbooks are available to you, if you wanna take us at home, have them at home, if you want them still carried home from class to class, you can." And I have two kids that have a textbook this year, just because they're so used to going online, they wanna see the homework there. I just tried it out this, this year, you know, "Hey, if you wanna online, go ahead." So, our kids have adapted to it really easy, they know that sometimes if you wanna have a book, hopefully you can. And I think that's kind of where, where we're going. If you're a kid that absolutely, you know, has to have a book, you know, we might have a classroom set available for, for the couple of families that need it, but for the most part, I think, the majority of our kids will transition really easily with this, and our teachers too.
And what about handwriting? I mean, do we just, are they advanced enough at sixth grade to not have to go any farther?
That was one of the other concerns that, you know, I did speak to all the teachers, or a lot of the teachers, before I went, because I wanted their concerns, and that was one of the concerns too. A language arts teacher said to me, "Come on, I can't grade a hundred papers on an iPad, I can't, like, our essays that we write, you know, I can't do that. My eyes are, you know, I'll be sitting all night." So, I asked the teacher, "Really, are you completely a hundred percent paperless or for more of the everyday type of activities?" And it's more of those everyday activities that every day is sending homework sheet. Language arts papers, essays, projects, we're not gonna get rid of projects completely, you know, we wanna be project-based learning. We want kids to communicate and create something. It's just, I think we're looking at this be more assisting us in the ways to be more learner-centered and less teacher-focused. I wanna, I wanna staff standing in front of the classroom, I want my kids to be able to learn and research and be able to find the resources on their own and less me telling them what to do. So, this is our tool, you know, we no longer need to go to Britannica, we, everything is going to, everything's gonna have the resources, which, you know, for social studies, textbook is kind of, I don't know, I mean, we could have a textbook, but I know what I want my kids to learn, so you go find, find out what you wanna know about World War I, and go back to me. So, the textbook conversation is, to me, there's so much information out there, why one textbook?
This is the way they're used to learning anyways, these kids are digital natives, unlike all of us who, you know, we didn't grow up with technology, and this is how they're used to accessing information. So, we're meeting them really where they're at. When, you know, we were at Iwaki, you know, it's a book review, I'm sorry, if your kids talk about, "I have to power down when I go to school." It's not how they're used to learning. So, you know, we're meeting them where they're, where they're at in a sense.
What's interesting is what I heard, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name and I apologize, that we are running a parallel system. If they want the textbook, it's available. But yet, most of them have already migrated or are into the technology world, but yet the other ones are available, which is very common anytime you make a change in the corporate world. You run parallel systems for a while. It's interesting to note how quickly they are, they have adapted to the technology world and don't want the, the written form.
So, Caitlin, what are your thoughts on iPads?
I really like the idea, actually. A lot of my classes, I know I'm in AP History and all of that, all of our assignments are online. He has a whole website set up for us, so we have all of our resources online. And a lot of my teachers have started doing the quiz thing, too. We take the quizzes online, so I like the idea. It's better than lugging home all those textbooks I have, they're so heavy.
Sits your back.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the AP's gonna shift to that. The AP's interesting with that, they will be, we will have to keep some books around for, for a while to keep their requirements. They have all your assignments, people have the Blackboard system now or something, right?
Yeah, they, MyHiku class, is what they call it, yeah, it's really nice, actually.
Yeah, all the AP courses have shifted to a completely electronic format to distribute assignments and that kind of stuff, yet when you get to that final be-all critical task, well, your pencil, your paper, and your Scantrons. Don't know why they do it.
Can you address why it was chosen to start this one-to-one initiative at the middle school level rather than at the high school?
Yeah, well, we also need to be going down younger. And when you look at the data that is out there for it, it doesn't support it. Fifth grade is kind of a questionable year that, you know, we're not sure about kind of thing, but certainly fourth grade and under, it's not well-supported there because some of those foundational skills are not in place. Handwriting, basic arithmetic, that kind of stuff, doesn't support it now. Then we get into an interesting problem as we get up into high school. And it has to do with, a lot of it unfortunately, with money and finance and everything else, that not a big problem in the ninth and tenth grades because their classes, especially the soft boards, are separate to the most part. However, when we get to the upper class, then there's co-main, which means that when we bring this program outboard in the upper grades, we're gonna have to break it all in one shot. That's difficult to do. We gotta wait to get to, you know, figure out how we're gonna do that, and we get that. My piece was, we did have some arguments, and we have a tech community arguing these problems back and forth. There was some argument about splitting between the high school and the middle school. I argued to try and keep self-keeping in a building, take a single staff at this point, train them very, very intensely for the, get it ingrained there, and then start rolling out in the higher grades.
The conversation that we had, you said you weren't sure that this was the right platform for high school.
The very upper grades, not so much ninth and tenth, but eleventh and twelfth grade is some of the requirements that they have. Yeah, I'm not sold that this is the absolute right platform for them. And I've seen Oshkosh and Portage run a mixed platform when they get to high school. They run this up from their younger grades all the way up to tenth grade, then they switch at eleventh and twelfth grade. Now, the conversations I need to have with them is, how are they doing that financially?
Switch to what, Eric?
They are switching actually to a homebrew laptop at that point.
That's what I was...
And let's not kid ourselves, it's not a little network either. So, we're not, we can't skate out on a, you know, cheap three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, isn't such a thing as a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, you know, portable computer out there. They've had to go to, they work homebrew laptops at that point, both of those districts. And I need to get up to their senior level administration there and talk to them, I had conversations with principals there, but they did not know the financing, and couldn't tell me exactly how that was done. So, again, more visitations and seeing the doctorate people and getting information. No questions? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, moving on to number five, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. Bernie?
There was an article, actually, there's a full page in the Journal Sentinel yesterday, taken out by Skyward. Could you help me understand the impact that potentially has on two-hundred-and-eighty-some school districts that they service?
Can you maybe send an email?
Yeah.
You don't have to comment now, I just, it was interesting to note that it was signed by the CEO, and he's obviously quite concerned about the future of his business.
Absolutely, yeah, and it doesn't impact us as much as other districts. So, but we will put something together, maybe we'll put it on the admin team agenda tomorrow.
Okay, sounds great. Any other items?
Well, I guess I'd like to maybe find out a little bit more about where Rick was going with the robotics club. He mentioned that he thought there was something coming down the pipe at the middle school at one point.
Okay.
Mr. Ellis?
No, 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 sorry.
Anyone else? Alright, number six, board member announcements.
You have a correction? I misspoke last meeting as to when middle school conferences were, they are the nineteenth of February, not the second through the ninth, sorry. They are the nineteenth of February, again, please take part, and sorry to be early.
Anyone else? I just wanna remind everyone that, we talked a little bit about it earlier, but that the dinner and the musical for the senior citizens will be held on Wednesday, March twentieth. Typically, the school board members and along with administration serves this meal, so I'm sure Kathy will be sending out an email asking for your participation on that. We arrive somewhere around four, four-thirty-ish, something like that. The doors open at five o'clock, the, there is a huge line at the doors already by the time the doors open at five. Dinner's at five-thirty, and then the senior citizens get to see the dress rehearsal of the play, which is Godspell, after that. So, Kathy will be sending out something and hopefully you can all attend. Other than that, no other announcements?
I have, I have one other one I just thought of. I did notice that the summer school schedule is posted. And there's some interesting offerings.
Alright, so if there are no other announcements, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Thank you, Bernie, is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Quinn, all in favor?
Aye.